Thank you.
I move the way to approve agenda.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, the consent calendar, plat of the Bluffs addition, tract four and five. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five, approval of minutes of the August 18th, 2022 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, public comments. This is an opportunity for anybody to address the commission on anything you would like, unless of course it's coming up on our regular scheduled agenda. Anybody have anything they would like to say? Hearing none. Item number seven. Hold on. Rezone application for 600 North Paskflower Trail. Lee, I believe this is you.
Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle, Brandon.
Okay, would you like to tell us? Oh, there we go.
So, just for the crowd, that's who's here. Mr. He's passing out a letter from Bukowski Truck saying they are in support of his development. So that's the letter we have received.
So basically what I'm trying to get across, I guess, is we had a hardship when we, if you look at that twin home development there that we had. We started kind of getting that thought process a year ago. Then we kind of went to the church. We had an estimate for our infrastructure of 250 when we started. On July 13th, we were ready to sign the contract with the person to put the infrastructure in. They came back with 574. Fortunately, if you look at them lots, they were only 40 foot wide. That means that we have to try to get 15,000 for each lot for that additional infrastructure cost. Can't make a 40-foot lot, put a $500,000 twin home on it versus a 300,000, okay? Just ain't got to support that. So basically, our hardship is, we're trying to figure out, we looked at alternative ways. Obviously, we had to pivot on July 13th. Said, what do we do? How do we, can't make this because it ain't gonna, ain't gonna happen. Can't, there are only 20 lots, can't spread it across. So I visited a little bit with Brian and Tammy, trying to get their thought process on this general business. If in your handout, I think you got from the 2035 comprehensive plan of Brandon, that was that colored one, had a little pink dot there. And that talks about that it was zone commercial, or that's what they thought it was going to get commercial. Kind of made a pivot at that point and said, okay, what can we do to try to get our infrastructure cost down? So by eliminating the one handout that you got, there's three proposed lots there with buildings that are on there. That cuts 17 lots of infrastructure cost. Basically, water sewer hookup fees, obviously the dirt cost and that kind of stuff is, stays the same. But that's kind of what tipped this project over. We talked to some of the neighbors. One of the ones you had a handout there that Patrick commented about. So I'm open for questions.
Patrick, can you bring up page number 10 back here? The future land use map?
Well, he's doing that. When I visited with Tammy and Brian there, if you go back to the one Patrick that you just had, if you can go back there, Tammy and Brian wanted to make sure that the street exits lined up with existing streets. So if you go back to that gray one that's on that screen over there, you see that's the streets, the entrances line up with the ones on Paskflower and across from Bukowski.
Okay. Anybody up here have any questions for Lee?
Lee, did you visit with any of the residential neighbors?
We did. One of them's in the audience tonight. I don't know if she would like to talk. And we had a conversation with other ones that's not here. They supported that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Lee?
On lot one. All the parking is on the same side as that whole residential area? This is on, either page nine on mine, or it's new in here.
That's something, Thomas, that the DGR engineer just kind of penciled out. Okay, there is a utility easement that's there that gets use of that. You know what I mean? Obviously, you can't build a building on top of a utility easement.
Well, I was just concerned about all that parking. Right next to the residential, I was wondering if it would be better on the other side.
Could be switched over. You know, that was just, like I said, that was just a conceptual drawing. Like the one that you had in your packet originally, just had the lots one, two, and three that's on the big screen.
The two and three don't seem to be a problem, but to me that kind of stuck out like a sore thumb.
Okay.
You say it's not set in stone, that could be changed.
That could be changed. You notice there they, they talk about a 15-foot setback there.
Yeah.
So just so people understand what they're talking about, we have an updated drawing for this lot. The building is right in here and the parking lot is shown being here and down here. On lot one.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Lee?
Yeah, I do.
Turn your mic on, please.
So lots two and three. The driveway to lot two, you said lines up with the, the road that's across from it, right?
Is it okay if I go by the screen? I'll touch it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right here is the existing.
That's the.
Yep, and then here's the entrance across there. And then here's the one that's in
I don't know, Brooks, Brooks head is in the way.
What's that?
Yeah, that's okay.
And then that one over here is across from Bukowski.
Uh huh. So there's, so there'd be two entrances on Paskflower Trail?
Correct.
And one of them lines up with the street across the street. What about the, for lot three? Does that line up with this?
Yep, that's, that's the one right here.
I'm sorry.
So this is lot three?
Yeah.
And right there is the street?
That's the street.
Where this finger is, and then this is the other proposal.
Oh, what about that? What about that one on lot two?
That's right here.
And that, and there's a street across from there too? Okay. And then those two parking lots would, like if, would somebody be able to drive from lot three to lot two without having to go back out to the street or?
Currently, the way DGR's got it drawn, there are separate lots that you've got of an easement for me to drive on your lot, so to speak.
Yeah. Okay. On the, on the off chance that somebody would want to go to one business and then the other, they'd go out to the street and back in? Okay.
Did the actual district, do you have one of your comment now?
Yeah.
The zoning regulations in the city of Brandon require a five-foot landscaping strip around the parking lot. So somebody would be going over potentially grass.
To, to accomplish that. So that's, that would not be workable. Now, he could cut a path potentially between them. Right now, it doesn't show that, but there needs to be that landscaping strip around a parking lot.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Lee? Anyone? All right, anybody would like to address this? Come on up. State your name and address for the record would be appreciated.
Hi guys, my name is Don DeJager. I'm at 504 East Mayberry. Directly across from lot three, that entrance to lot three is directly crossed, it's not an alley, that's our access to a private alley, and that's the only access to my house there. We had a, this is the third go-around at this, and I want to echo the sentiment of Mayor Hines when he said, we owe these people the obligation to leave it what it was when they decided to build their homes there. You know, we knew, and I checked, what the development was, it was R1. That's why we fought against the high density. We felt it would affect our way of life, our homes. The second proposal, where they talked about these twin homes, everyone was in complete agreement with it. They were going to be nice, 300,000 to 400,000. I thought, you know, this is perfect. And all of a sudden, it's not economically viable. And I'm a little shocked because I took the time to drive around Brandon, look at the multiple, multiple homes that are being built around Brandon Lake, all over. But somehow, that doesn't work here. So I would ask you guys just to honor what was already decided. You know, the city council made the recommendation, I think the first time was high density, please talk to the neighbors. I live directly across. No one ever approached me. As far as Bukowski's, they're a business, not caring. They get to go to their homes at night. I wouldn't expect Bukowski to care if water towers went there, or skyscrapers, or whatever the heck. You know, it affects those directly around that. And no, you know, I would have loved to have the opportunity to sit down and say, hey, let's look at this. What can we do that's going to not affect my way of life, what I chose when I decided to build my home there? And I know in the futures map, you know, there's, it might be a light pink or something, or you know, there's change in the future. You know, that should have been decided long ago when Brandon came out with their guide. Because no, I would not have spent that money, bought a lot, build a home next, right next to commercial property. And I certainly don't want to walk out and see rows of cars and having, like what was stated, cars coming right out of a business, turning right there, going to the next one when I'm trying to, that's right across from my property. It's not going to look nice, no matter how it's done. You know, there was some talk about what kind of businesses and things, but that becomes irrelevant. You know, they, I think it was the last meeting, we had the whole city map up, and they said, look at this area, it's all single-family homes. Clearly, strip malls do not fit right there. So that was my topics of concern. So thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Jo Hosman. I'm 517 North Tamarack. And so I did meet with these guys because they asked me to come meet with them. And at the beginning, I thought, yeah, this might work. But what I also asked them to do is send letters to the homeowners in our neighborhood and just, you know, be open and honest. And they said, well, once they talked to the city, they don't have to send letters, which I understand that. I used to be on city council. But I think just to come in blindly and now put parking right up against, you know, our lot line, and for goodness sakes, weren't we just here like six months ago figuring this out to zone it back over to R1 or R2? And, you know, just the way this kind of went on, I just, I don't feel like it's been upfront and honest. When they first met with me, I thought, okay, this is going to be good, this is going to be okay. But I'd like to know who else they talked to in the neighborhood, because I know I've had to talk to some of my neighbors, and they're here tonight. And I wish there would have been, been more honesty and been more openness about it. But I do not like how there's going to be parking up against the houses. If they're going to do it, they need to be on the other side. And just my two cents. Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Trailer.
Sorry.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mike Trailer, 613 North Tamarack. I'm one of the people who are adjacent to this lot. First off, he said he talked to people, didn't talk to me. First I heard of it was the lot, the sign on the lot. That's pretty poor faith. So really, my point I want to make is, again, as with last time, this is a lot nestled in between housing to the east and west, a church to the south, which I don't personally consider a business. It's more of a community center, if anything, to me. All the business along Redwood is on the north side of the road, not the south. I don't understand why your map has pink there. I question when that was decided. I don't believe anybody in this administration was part of that at the time, were you? You don't have to answer that, but.
Actually, yeah.
Well, okay.
Well, so a future land use map
Okay.
is basically us sitting here with blank land going, what do we think it could be someday?
Okay.
So it's not, this is not a map that's set in stone.
Okay.
This is just simple guidance. So, yeah.
Okay. I don't think that falls in the character of everything around it. I looked on the map of Brandon today. I tried to see, how many places do we have a business or a few businesses nestled in amongst residential? Other than like, two places I could find, the old Atlas Building over on Sioux, south of Once Upon a Time, and Once Upon a Time, daycare my kids go to. Okay? Not a whole lot else where that is seen. So I don't know why it would be okay to do here. My other concern about this going into general business, I don't even understand what that means, to be frank. Okay? To me, it could be they could have a small office, they could have some kind of retail stores there. And if you go retail stores or casinos, how do I know we don't end up with a casino, some sort of dispensary in the future, you know? Other, what I would quote, what I would call an undesirable business in, or next to my home. Okay? How do I know that we won't get something like that there? You know, that, those are my biggest concerns. Again, I would ask, you know, if this was your backyard, would you want it there? Does it really belong in this lot? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. Hi. My name's Riley Walls. I live at 609 North Tamarack Avenue. I originally, so that is also next to Mike, so on the east side of the property, right up against the lot in question. So I moved here in 2020 and have been here for two years. Within the past nine months, this is the third city council meeting I've been to. As much as I want to be involved in my community, this isn't necessarily how I wanted to be involved. For the most part, I'm sure you're all aware that in April, or sorry, not April, November of 2021, we had the meeting from an R1 to an R3 for the rezoning for this property. Many of the concerns that we had then are still relevant to this change to the general business. With the uncertainty of long-term tenants, we don't know exactly what, what or who, what kind of businesses are going to go in here. And there's no guarantee that they're going to stay for a longevity. We know it's tough keeping businesses and a lot of the properties around here. Lack of green spaces, building heights, going from R1 to a general business raises it to 45 feet, which is limiting the access for the neighbors, solar access for all of us around. Another thing that was a concern was traffic from Redwood and Paskflower. So all the traffic coming in here, and now that we are having businesses or wanting to have businesses, it's going to be an increase of traffic going in and out. And with the church there, I'm sure Sundays will be pretty busy. So all these concerns are still relevant for this general business question. Back in, for the R3, the city council had to decide that this was not, it didn't make any sense. And so they denied it. So with general business being in question now, there are more concerns that pop up. Another one of mine is light pollution from 24/7 parking, 24/7 hour parking lights. Like if that parking lot is going to be on that side, those lights will be on 24/7 for security reasons. Also, loitering is unavoidable. I mean, no matter what, if there's a place for kids to hang out or people to hang out with, they will hang out there. So these are some of the new concerns that are being brought up with general business. We met here in April, as was stated before, and we all came to a very happy conclusion. I, well, we thought a conclusion. And we were happy with having more like split housing going behind us and having more long-term residents. But with all this, all these concerns said, I do have a question for Lee. Am I able to ask Lee a question?
Sure.
So, Lee, whenever you referred to Brian, which Brian was that?
Brian, City Administrator.
Okay. So yeah, I'm questioning if there is, I mean, the amount of proposals that have gone through this site is really causing some sort of distrust with a lot of these things. And I don't know if there's any investments going on, not making any accusations, just questioning. So for the most part, I mean, looking at the city planning, where you guys decided that the business came down into there, I was wondering if this is a proactive plan or reactive plan to a proposal for this general business?
You want to know when this map was made?
Sorry, the, uh, future planning, the pink.
Oh, I don't know. Where did we do this? 10, 15 years ago?
December 2014? Okay. So I'm wondering why that wasn't brought up earlier. But anyways, last question I have is if an R3 didn't make sense for this lot, then why would general business? And that's just a rhetorical question, don't need to answer that. But like I said before, trust is starting to flee. I have not met with the, he claimed that he met all of us, but no, I have not. This is the first time seeing this person or knowing who they were. Overall, I guarantee you, if we pass this, we will be here again for a conditional use for dwellings. Simply, it's just a roundabout way to get an R3, R3 qualifications with the bonus of having businesses underneath. So those are my main concerns. And also, I just want to reiterate, or not reiterate, but remind everybody that proposals aren't final unless contracts are signed, drawings are signed, and dirt starts moving and footings get put in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. It's already on. Perfect.
Hi, my name's Shawna Shipper. I'm the original owner at 601 Tamarack. In the last few days, I've been doing my own research, talking to my own engineers, architects. They advised me that this is not a really good idea for the homeowners along the, along that, the streets. I'm here again with some of the same concerns that I did last time. First of all, water runoff. Couple of years ago, according to the engineer's report, we spent 300, almost $350,000 on the Redwood storm sewer improvements. I'll remind you, when it rains, it still floods. The issues grew exponentially with the addition of buildings and paved parking that reduced green space and lack of planning over the last two decades. And then industrial area reduced, put all the water that's going now down into Redwood and flooding when it rains. It doesn't seem like a very good solution to take all that green space away. I've never had a sun pump in my house, but I fear that I will have water issues in the future. Speaking with my insurance people, they are very cautious about overflow of water and advising flood insurance. It's unfair to expect the existing homeowners to carry that liability. Second, just overall, it doesn't make sense. The nearest walk-in business is blocks away. It would be an island amongst residential properties. All the dentists, boutiques, dining, chiropractors, they're all along Split Rock and Holly. I also just side note, noticed that the commercial project along I-90 is stalled. Another concern is, when will these businesses that are unknown going to be open and closed? Commonly, deliveries are done before sunrise and after business hours. As a matter of fact, that's where my husband is now, doing deliveries to businesses, and he couldn't be here. And air breaks out loud at four in the morning. Also, I'm going to remind, you know, another thing that needs to be, kind of another issue that needs to be looked into is traffic. It's not unheard of for traffic to be backed up on Redwood to amplify fitness or beyond when the bus stops for kids on 9th Avenue North. Consider that Bukowski has dozens of trucks and trailers getting on and off the street, makes it a little challenging for some of the drivers. And the bus barn is a block away, and they have hundreds of buses coming and going each day. It would be embarrassing to have worse traffic than Sioux Falls. I've not seen a plan until now. What I'm not seeing is a retainer's pond, not seeing burns. I'm not seeing a fence for the homeowners. Think that should also be, you know, something that should be done before even construction is started. But as a planning and zoning, I'd actually look at the, the big picture and what this would do to residential neighborhood. People move to Brandon in part to get that hometown feel, not the big city style traffic and flooding issues. We're just asking you to do justice to the current and future citizens and visitors of Brandon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
My name's Steve Vanderbeek, 501 Paskflower Trail. I have most of, pretty much the same thoughts and concerns as everybody else who has spoken already. I just let you know, I'm here at the meeting and what my position is, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. Anyone else?
TJ Barthman, 1016 South Nicholas Avenue. I'm business partners with Lee on this project. So to address some of the questions that had come up, the drawing that you guys got with the actual buildings on it, yeah, we received that like two days ago. And there, it's a conceptual drawing, so that's why it wasn't, that's why it hasn't been shared, I guess you could say, to this point. DGR put that together, that's our engineering firm. The parking on that side, that's just an engineer's way of trying to utilize a setback and a utility easement and put some parking there. It can easily go on the other side. Not, not an issue at all. As far as the no letters got sent out, that is accurate. We did not send out letters. We contacted the city to get the addresses to send out. And they said on rezoning, we don't send out letters. So we didn't send any letters out. So that's, that's kind of what happened there. I did tell Joe I take responsibility for that. We still could have come around, knocked on doors, did whatever. As far as businesses in next to residential. I would disagree with the person that came up, they're actually all over Brandon. You can go down Aspen and you've got Pace on the corner backing up to residential. You've got, yeah, it backs up to residential.
Fastenal.
Yep, or yeah, the old Pace building, I should say, the old Pace building over there. On Aspen, you've now got Barks and Rec, which is right across the street, got a daycare right across the street. On Redwood itself, you've got a daycare on the south side of Redwood. So there are businesses on the south side, you've got a new tire store across Split Rock, but on the south side. And then, yeah, the rest of the businesses are on the north side. Anytime Fitness, yeah, Fastenal's on there, yep, that's off there also. So, so there are businesses that eventually somewhere back up to residential. That's, and there are city guidelines that we have to follow or that the person have to follow as far as the fence, berms, those things. Those are all, once, once somebody buys that lot and goes to put up a building, that's when Paul would come in and that stuff has to be done. There has to be a fence, there has to be a berm, those type of things. On that drawing too, I apologize, we just got it two days ago from DGR. There is a BMP that would go on the south side of that, so that was a question that had come up for drainage. There's a BMP that does go in there. That would basically go down there for the drainage. It would be, Paul, you could probably explain it better than I can, or Patrick, you probably can. But it would be for the water drainage at the south side of Lot 3 and Lot 1. It's kind of in the middle south side.
Would it be helpful for the people in the crowd if we passed around the drawing? If anybody would be interested in seeing it? It's here if anyone would like to see it.
BMP, by the way, I believe stands for best managed practice.
I think so, yeah. I think you're right, yeah.
It's a drainage area.
Yeah, drainage area.
BMP is a fancy term for drainage area.
Sorry. Yep.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. So, you know, back to also what Lee said, and I know this isn't their issue or anything like that, but, you know, when we started this, we did have a bid. That bid has more than doubled from what we originally started with. And the city is seeing the same things with infrastructure costs. They're, they're doubling and going even higher than that. And so we can't take the project and take those added expenses. I don't, there's not enough lots to, to make that money back up. So that project in itself financially doesn't pencil. And so we had to pivot, we had to change course through our due diligence. That's when we found the 2035 master plan or whatever it's called. And that's when we started to get some, some infrastructure cost for the three lots. And that basically would allow us to pretty much have our same initial investment as we originally was going to, were going to do with the twin homes. So it still would pencil at the three, the three general business lots. The reason that works is we eliminate 17 water and sewer hookups. We eliminate a cul-de-sac, we eliminate curb and gutter, we eliminate streetlights, we eliminate two manholes. There's a lot of infrastructure that goes away with going to this, which makes it possible, which makes it work. So our focus, and he's correct, the gentleman's correct, it's a conceptual. But our focus is really that owner-occupied type setting to where you have a chiropractor, you have a hair salon, you have an insurance company. There is already a daycare, probably two blocks around the corner, so I don't know if that would be, but that, an eye clinic, you know, we're, it's more of a professional plaza we're trying to go for, where that is more of an eight to five, nine to six type timeframe. Some of the concerns as far as what could go there, those are all laid out in the city guidelines as far as ordinances and what can go there, who has to go get a, who can be approved, who can't be approved, who has to get, you know, come back through planning and zoning, all that stuff's already set out. We don't really control that. So I'm, and I think you had a question, I'll answer it if you had a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, just talk, ask a question.
So I agree with you when you named several businesses like Fastenal and such, a map up to residential. Looking at this, the sheer amount of parking here and the amount of light that this is going to kick off. You know, when you look at the spaces, these places you name, you look at the parking they have in front, if you can drive to the residential, it's dark back there. You know, when you go to B&amp;G, that's developed all the way down, there's very few, not, you know, there's not very much parking for those businesses. The homeowners behind there don't get, get a true supply, and looking at the sheer amount of parking here, how would you address the lighting issue?
Sure, so in your Lot 2 and 3, I think the lighting would be fine. I think the main concern is what you're liking Lot 1. And again, it's probably a bad conceptual drawing because the engineer put all that parking backed up to those houses there. And again, from an engineering standpoint, his job is to try to utilize it the best he can. And there's an easement, there's a 15-foot setback plus a utility easement. So he's just trying to double up on that space, if you will, use that square footage, so he puts some parking there. That, that's the only reason that parking's there. We don't have a building to go there tomorrow with parking there. That, that's just the way he's trying to utilize the square footage the best he can.
Well, looking at Lot 3, that's my car, if you'd be looking at this, you know, parking lot, you have light on the whole house. That's why I was just looking at where, because I understand it's just conceptual.
Yeah, so on Lot 3, the building, in that conceptual drawing, the building's on the south side. And then your parking would be on the north side of that building in that one, right? That's the way you're looking at it, yeah. So you're, you're directly across the street, I think, if I remember right, where you said, okay, yep, yep. And so, I mean, you can have it different ways. Again, the engineer's drawing that to give that potential building some visibility from Redwood. That's why he's got the north facing, if you will, to Redwood. You see what I'm saying, so?
And then the other concern was just the opposite there, however it's set up of that lot, like, as I stated, they can't go across the other lot. Every bit of cars that come out directly to the only access I have to all of its neighbors, all of its private alley.
Yep, so you could walk across, but Paul's right, there would be some type of green space that you couldn't drive through. But you could walk across if you were in one parking lot and want to go to the other, you sure could. And when we were, you know, kind of thinking about it, the original, which you would have had during the twin home talk and you guys have now, there was actually way more, I would consider way more traffic on pass with the twin home idea than there is here. Because that would have given you, I think, eight parking, eight driveways, this gives you two.
It's just the modern traffic, you know, with this pass water being a narrow road, as you're aware. It's the, you know, and I agree that, looking at the homeownership, you know, twin home would be able, but the sheer number of cars bringing out these businesses on a narrow road directly across my access. I, that's why I have concerns.
Then I wouldn't say you can comfortably say that it would be less traffic or more traffic, because like you said, you go in the woods.
Yep, nope, you're right.
Unless you have a list of businesses that are already signed up and like out.
No, no, I don't, no, I don't.
And as far as the drawing goes for parking, no matter what, there will be a certain amount of parking because there is parking requirements for the building.
Correct, yep. But it doesn't have to go on that side, is what I'm saying.
No, it doesn't, but there's still going to be lighting all the way around for security reasons.
Okay, does anybody on the commission have any questions for TJ?
Yes, fire away.
Microphone, please.
All right, so let's say, for example, this lot to building, you say 10,000 square feet. Would you think of that as like a strip mall with three different businesses in it, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, it definitely could be. So we were involved in one over in Sioux Falls, and it was two 5,000 square foot buildings. One is a CPA and one is a mortgage company. And they're both owner-occupy, they're spaces. Being involved in both and having conversations with both afterwards, they've kind of wished they would have just done one building and been neighbors, and one guy owns it and rents out to the other guy.
Cause like, I think maybe a beauty shop wouldn't need 10,000 square feet.
You're exactly right.
Or like Lot C, that's 38 parking places.
Yep.
A beauty shop wouldn't need 38 parking places.
Right.
But that building's big enough to have two or three businesses in it.
Yep.
Okay, so my other question is, like today, right now, who owns the land? Have you guys bought it yet?
Yeah, Lee and I, no, Lee and I own the land.
You guys still, you guys own the land?
We own the land, yep.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. So each of these three buildings could hold more than one client.
If they, yeah, if they wanted to, absolutely, yep.
Otherwise, if it's one client in a 12,000 square foot building.
They could do that too.
Like.
So there potentially could be only three businesses there, yeah. Yep, yep.
Thanks.
TJ, is it your guys' intent to build the buildings on speculation or just try to do it?
Just sell the dirt.
To sell the dirt, okay.
Anybody else have any questions for TJ? Yep. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for the commission? Come on up if you do.
There was a question raised about potential uses. In the back of the room, there's a black binder that has the packet for the meeting in it. On page 12, moving forward a couple of pages are the regulations for the general business district. Permitted uses are, the way, I'm sure mostly you probably know all this already, but educational moment. Permitted uses are things where, assuming they meet setback requirements, generally, there's probably some buffer requirements, depending on what's around it. But permitted uses are you get a building permit and you are generally good to go. Conditional use permits, you would have to come back before this board and seek special permission to do a project with specifics on what you want to do. So conceptionally, the list of permitted uses are things that would be allowed. A permitted use is a use by right, whereas a conditional use, they have to get special permission. So conceptionally, anything on the permitted uses list would be allowed should they rezone the property. And that binder is in the back of the room, should you all have questions about what those are.
All right, come on up.
Jeff Smith, 517 Morning Rain. Understand these gentlemen are businessmen, and they came to this agreement to buy this and put homes in. We have lived in the, at 517 for 20 years. We were, we're the longest original people in there. We bought these homes to raise our children. And it was R1, we want to see it increase, we want to see something there. We loved, you know, the twin homes was a phenomenal improvement to our neighborhood in which we really wanted. We didn't want multifamilies having more people in that area than we do now. We're also, now if we go this way, we're going to have more building, more square foot than we have. It's been brought up more than once, that this, they've only had two days of prelims. Well, as stated, we've been there 20 years, that's a long time for two days worth of prelims to just come in and say, we'd like to do this and change this to a, to a area where we have buildings and, and uses such as that. There's really nothing stating what can or cannot go in there. And as stated here, by these gentlemen, they, they want to turn it and get their, you know, recoup their cash, totally understand that. Well, with that being said, folks, I'd like to recoup my cash on the residence that I bought and, and the development that we bought it and purchased our homes in. There's been a lot of people come and go, we built one to stay, and I plan on being here for a long time. We'd like you to, to look at it from our, our point of view and just take that into consideration. We, we made an agreement for the R1, everybody was all in, let's roll. Costs have increased, totally understand. But to have things changed in, in days, weeks, months for something that we strive, strove very hard, strive very hard to keep, maintain, I would just like you to take that into consideration on behalf of those that have been there for quite some time. And we are pretty adamant about our neighborhood, and we really like it. So thank you for the time and appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything? The commission, you have any other comments or questions? I will say, well, I have a lot of comments, but, you know, we, we sat and listened to something like this about a decade ago with an R1 development that was changed to a general business. It's now where you go to scooters and B&amp;G and the chiropractor. Those are all supposed to be houses. There was a room full of people just like this that also didn't want that, that to be built. So, yes, we have done this previously. I also know that a lot of people have approached me who would like to have a pedestrian city, but yet, we don't have any commercial to walk to. So it's kind of hard to have a pedestrian city. So, I mean, it's up to you guys, I don't vote on this, but. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'd just say too, that I, you know, we've kind of struggled with these properties and this location because of the way it's set and that this development kind of wasn't finished out at the time. And it's, it's just a, it's been difficult every time we've discussed it because of it having light industrial across the road in the north. And, and, I mean, ideally, you'd like to buffer, but obviously, we didn't have that opportunity here, so. I was hoping we weren't going to have to look at this property again, but that's the way it is, so it was the.
Well, and a little, a little history lesson on this property, it was all bought by the church originally because the church was always fully intending on building a sanctuary on this property. Things just necessarily didn't work out for the church. They were going to build a sanctuary. The building that's currently sitting there was not supposed to be their sanctuary. It was only supposed to be their auxiliary sanctuary until they had the money to build the sanctuary. So they bought big to start with. But that hasn't come to fruition, so.
So procedurally, this, a rezone is treated as would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is amendment to the zoning map, part of the zoning ordinance. So this is a public hearing before planning and zoning. Planning and zoning would make a recommendation to the city council to either rezone or they recommend not to rezone. But ultimately, this would go to the city council, and the city council would hold something similar to this. And I'm sure they would invite you all to come and offer comments so they can make an informed decision as well. But, so there is that future meeting down the road as well, so the city council will ultimately decide. But they go off it, yes, next Tuesday.
The meeting will be Tuesday, yes.
So that's kind of procedurally how it would go. So this is just the planning and zoning making a recommendation to either rezone or not rezone is what planning and zoning does here today.
Patrick, do you see any legal reason why this can't be rezoned?
I don't want to, so whatever I, I say is not me offering legal advice. It is just my opinion based on planning. No, no, so planning and zoning wise, that's kind, it's, rezones are always tough because they're a, a policy decision that actively impacts people in real time. So it's, what you try to do is, so the comprehensive plan has been mentioned several times, and that's where the map with the pink dot comes in. The comprehensive plan is the planning part of planning and zoning. Generally, you have your current land use, which is what we are now, and the future land use map with the pink dot is how we plan or think things will develop. And, and the zoning ordinance and grants and engineering plans and all that kind of stuff are your tools to get from your current land use to your future land use. That's not necessarily saying that you're locked in with the comprehensive plan, but that's kind of your plan for development, right or wrong, that's, that can be changed as well. This board has talked about, maybe it's time to revisit the comprehensive plan just because Brandon has grown substantially from when the time that was written. So maybe some things in there make sense and maybe some things don't. It's, it ultimately comes down to whether you all feel the, the planning commission feel, and the city council feels, the list of permitted uses in general business are ultimately what fits the property, is what it kind of comes down to.
Yes. Make sense?
Yes.
That was not a legal answer.
Tim, I would just make the comment that I've, I've been struggling since I saw this on the agenda just because I know that as a city, we need space for businesses to expand.
Yep.
So that, I'm, I'm struggling with that because I understand what the. So that, I'm struggling with that because I understand what the neighbors are saying, too.
We do have a little bit of struggle with commercial development. One of our main roads in town, Holly, dead ends in the middle of the, in the middle of the city. So, you know.
And most of...
You can only go that far. And then on Highway 11, we've got from the interstate to here, but then once you turn and start going south, there's the river, and you can't build. So, where do we put retail, then? You know, it's... Pardon me?
Hold on.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult. I wasn't on planning and zoning when this most recent revision happened, but I've been through, I was on planning and zoning years ago, and I went through one, one comprehensive plan update. It's not easy. If, and it's not easy to make the decision because you can't make everybody happy. If, by my way, I'd go back in time and, and have somebody convince the church council not to sell the land unless it could be a certain way, you know? But, we're beyond that. So, I like that Patrick is here and can explain some things that maybe the general public doesn't know about how the process works. I like that a lot. Thanks for doing that. Because I think the more people who understand how the process works, the, the less friction there might be.
One question that does get asked sometimes is, well, if you allow a rezone, can you make them only do X, Y, or Z? That's what they're limited to. And unfortunately, you are not allowed to condition a rezone, so you can't say, we'll allow you to rezone, but you can only do office. You're not allowed to do it. Unfortunately, when you rezone, you get the whole list, is, is what the rezone does. So, that's a limitation in zoning, but you can't condition the rezone, if that was a question people had.
Now, another thing to consider is that there's always the option to create a new zone. Like, we have a general business zone that's fairly inclusive with all kinds of different kinds of businesses. It's, it's got gas stations to whatever. I mean, there's always the option to create a completely different zone that is more limited, that's more consolidated. That's obviously not going to happen the second, but it's certainly a discussion that could be had if, if we thought it was warranted.
We have general business, and that's, I mean, it just means what it says, general?
Central and general, but generally, they're pretty close to the same uses. The difference is setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Some communities do have what's called a neighborhood commercial district that tends to be very limited commercial uses that they try to craft around them being surrounded by homes.
Yeah. In real big cities, they don't have, like, just one main drag where there's all, I mean, they have that, but when the city gets big enough, they have certain intersections where you'll find a pocket of, of retail, you know, so people don't have to drive clear across town to get groceries or school supplies or something, you know?
Correct.
Little pockets.
And, and generally, those retail spaces are focused on certain types of businesses that would be less objectionable to the homes around them. Brandon does not have that, but that is something, as Tim mentioned, we can certainly discuss as well. Planning and zoning likes discussing things.
And we have another business district, don't we, that isn't, not industrial, but for business, don't we?
There's central and there's...
General.
Central.
Central and general.
And general, correct.
And, and what's the difference of those two?
You're sitting in central.
Central is...
Downtown. Think of downtown where businesses are in a row. They're right on each other, so there's not really side yard setbacks. They're right on the sidewalk, so there's not usually a front setback. There's some rear yard setback, but it's generally not huge. To kind of picture, the local example, if, if you think of downtown Sioux Falls, how the businesses kind of run in a row, that's kind of a downtown.
Central business.
It's, yes, central business, whereas general business does have setbacks. It's more of...
We have a block of central business.
Yep.
One block.
Here and across the road.
You're, you're in it.
Thank you all for your patience while I ask questions.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question?
Come on up.
All right. And this is, oh, sorry. Joe Hosman, again, 517 Tamarack, have a question. So, Tom's businesses are right there on Holly and Sioux.
Yep.
Okay, he wants to build more. Have those been sold yet? He still now has an opening in his, in his thing that he has. Has that been rented? Has, has a new building been sold? I mean, so we already have that block that needs to be sold on a major, you know, where everybody comes and goes from the city. So we have that right there, that's still wide open, and he's had that open for several years now, that he's still looking for tenants and wants to build. I get that. But, so what's going to be the difference between behind our house, behind our houses, and what, I mean, Tom's on a major, and he's got a great location, I mean, fantastic location. So what's the difference between, you know, I mean, is his going to sit and ours is going to, you know, it's going to be built behind us right away? I think ours might sit for a while, too. Just my own personal opinion, but guess we never know.
And that's kind of a, that's a business thing, whereas planning and zoning is more focused on this particular property.
Yeah, that's, part of that answer is, he's building to rent, where, like I said, our focus is more of the owner occupied. So if you wanted to put up your own building, you couldn't go where Tom has his. He's going to build it, and he's going to rent to you. Ours would be more of the owner occupied, where you build your own building and then you occupy it. That'd be the difference.
Come on up.
Yeah, go ahead.
609 North Tamarack Avenue. Question, so is there a plan to have, like, a city planner at all for Brandon?
Sorry, what?
A city planner? To lay out different proposals for ideas, or, you know?
You're looking at him.
Okay, well, I'm just, that's the question.
We call him a development director, but he's...
It's just, to me, it seems very reactionary, in which, like, there's proposals popping up. I feel like there's very valid points. But, I feel like it shouldn't be put onto you all to make the decision to alleviate hasty decision-making or, you know, poor purchases.
That's what a planning and zoning commission does.
Well?
That's why we're here. That's the only reason we exist, actually, is for that.
Interesting.
Yeah. We write the ordinances, and then we figure out how to try to enforce them. So anybody up here have any other questions, or would you like to make a motion or a recommendation?
From that planner perspective, if anyone does have any thoughts on the zoning ordinance and how it works, how it doesn't work, what can be improved, ideas we can improve. If you look at the agenda, we have several discussion items. We're constantly revising the zoning ordinance to try to make it work. We're later on, we're talking about parking pads, ways to make fences work better. We're talking about, since we do, one thing we're trying to eliminate are seas of parking everywhere. So one thing we're talking about is cooperative and shared parking. That's down the road. So, if you can think of things to improve things, we are certainly open to it. I have, I don't have a card on me, but my email address and phone numbers on the website, so I am open to your suggestions as well.
Thank you.
I do not know if they have considered that for this site. It's kind of a, this is the second time it's been on the agenda. It's more or less, at this point, at a city level, a discussion item. It's nothing that they could apply to their site yet, but it's something we're discussing to avoid a situation. The example we throw around is Dolly Farms, how, other than outside Target, you have a lot of parking that is rarely occupied. So, would it make sense if they had a couple more businesses out there rather than just to see a parking? We're trying to think of ways to be more effective with our land use, rather than just having empty parking spots.
And all the meetings are open to the public.
Just one more comment about the shared parking. We do have a zoning regulation that does require, the required parking spaces, which is Table 1 of the Off-Street Parking Regulation, to be on that lot. Once they met that requirement, then you could have laid over parking that we can't control, but your required parking spaces must be on your lot, so...
Okay, so I would entertain any more discussion from the commission, or a motion and a recommendation.
I would like to recommend that...
Could we get a microphone?
I would like to recommend that this would be passed on to the city council with a recommendation to pass it.
You would like to go forward with a rezone? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because I'm, there's a lot of reasons why people are against it being there, but I'm saying, yeah, I would like to recommend it.
So we have a motion to recommend the rezone to council. Is there a second?
Set.
There's a motion and a second to recommend the rezone to council. Any further discussion by the commission? Okay, hearing done. Should we roll call this? Yeah, Paul says yes. Patrick, would you like to? This is awesome. This is twice.
Yeah.
Two meetings in a row.
So, we'll start Thomas.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Chuck.
Aye.
Brooks.
All right. Motion carries to recommend a rezone to the city council.
So, as was talked about before, the city council will be discussing this and making a decision at the Tuesday meeting coming up. Their meeting is at 6 o'clock. So it's a little bit different time, but it's in this room, 6 o'clock, on Tuesday. Normally, it's Monday, but there's a holiday, so it's Tuesday.
Okay. I would now make a motion to adjourn the planning and zoning commission and call the order the Board of Adjustments. Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, we will take a slight intermission. We'll give him 30 seconds. The good news is, I can call the meeting to order. I can also do, I can determine that there is a quorum, and we will wait just a few minutes to get the approval of the agenda. No, Chuck, we're not going to have him call in from the bathroom. Man alive. All right, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda, or a motion, yes, so moved. Second, motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments again for the Board of Adjustments. This seems weird, but here we are. So, anybody have any public comments for us? Hearing none. Item number 12, a variance application for 1420 East Cedar Street.
You do have an email that I have received. It's the page that stapled together. So, I was emailed, and you can see the, kind of, the back and forth. I explained what the variances were to him, kind of, a conversation on what you all would review, namely, in the variance section F, 1 through 6, are kind of what you reviewed. So, but ultimately, in my opinion, you, you all can read it and render your decision. But my understanding, based on that, was his objections were kind of more to the use and the parking that it would create, rather than the subject of the variance. But, that is in front of you for your consideration, since it was a public comment on this item.
Okay. Zach?
Yes.
There we go.
I'm Zach.
Why don't you let us know what you want to do?
Yeah, so I'm the owner of Terra 29 Haunted House, so we kind of already got a goofy thing, a little different. What we're looking at doing is, for our queue line, it's a haunted attraction like the J.C.'s have, Twisted Nightmare, et cetera. And we have a queue line that's outside, where the customers go through into a line to get into the haunted attraction. So we're looking to build a 30 by 20 gazebo pergola. And I've worked a lot with Paul, much respect for him. You've helped out a lot. And any which way we do it, there's some codes that we can't follow. So, for example, with general business, we're only allowed, yeah, and if you want to, perfect. With general business, we're only allowed one secondary structure, which we have two buildings on the property that I'm leasing. So making this gazebo pergola thing would be considered a third accessory structure. So that's the hardship that we're facing, is that we can't follow the code. That's what the variance is for. The other part of that is, we have a 25-foot setback. That's the yellow area there. The green is the pergola that we're looking to build, and it'll go in about five feet on the east side, and about 10 feet. It'll, it'll be identical to the, the second building on the north there, but it does go into the setback like the second building does already. The one thing I would point out is it still is in, in sequence with the actual main building, so it's not out of the ordinary. It's only about 10 feet out from the house up north as well. That's, that's where I'm at. So I would like, any questions or comments, or I appreciate your time. I appreciate being a part of this process and you guys being here.
Yep.
I have some questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Turn your mic on, please. Thank you.
I'm, all right. So, the building to the south, the bigger one.
Mm-hmm.
Is that where the, where you want to do the haunted house thing?
Both.
Both?
Yes. Yep, so if I can...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, what will happen, so we have all this land space here.
Right.
This is where the customers will wait to get into the haunted attraction. They'll enter into this building, they'll exit from this one. We'll kind of L-shaped them into here, and then they'll exit through the front here. So we'll utilize both buildings.
Where do you, where would the parking be?
So, that's a very good question. Both streets have the off, the street parking, plus the businesses down in this area. I've talked to them, because we're only open in October. It's only one month. And it's from, 7 o'clock is open until 11. So all those businesses in this area over here are going to be closed at that point, so they're going to let us use their parking lots as well. So on the tickets, we'll show a map of where parking is available. Plus, we'll, we'll have security parking as well to guide people where there's available areas.
So, you're, if you would be only, if you would be open only in October, what would, would any, there would be, would there be any activity in, around those buildings, other parts, other times of the year?
No. The only thing to interject is, in the, the main bigger building in the front, we have a gift shop, so a horror Halloween store. So I've toyed around with the idea of having that open year-round. I don't know how successful that would be, or if that's something we're even going to entertain. But the parking in front of the building would be sufficient for just that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But in general, it's similar to a fireworks business, you know, we, you know... But in general, it's similar to a fireworks business, you know, we operate for a very short time for the year.
So when the people would go from one building to another, would there be like attractions, or do they just walk across and enter the other building, or would there be?
Both, so we'll use pallets to kind of guide them from building one to two. We have a really cool tree, so we'll have, so it's not necessarily an attraction, but it's a scene, so we'll have some like dead bodies hanging in the tree in that area.
Screaming and stuff?
Um, not so much outside, no.
No, not outside.
Yeah, really, the goal is just to get them from building one to building two outside. And especially in October, it's so hit or miss with the weather and snow, so the lease, and that's also the reason for the pergola, is to operate safely so the customers are comfortable, so we have a roof on the top in case it is raining or snowing.
You're not talking about an enclosed structure, just a canopy type?
Correct, yep, it's not an actual building, yep, it's four-by-four posts.
The walls, just this.
Correct, yep. Four-by-four posts in the ground with the roof on the top.
What about the people walking from building to building? They're going to have a perky little event. If it's raining, they're going to have wetting.
Mm-hmm, yep, and that's the same issue that other, Twisted Nightmare has an outside thing as well, they come across that same issue. That's why we're keeping it very short outside.
Paul, if this gentleman were to attach the gazebo or pergola or canopy, or whatever we call it, attach it to that north building, would he still need a variance?
Yeah, we went both ways. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Well, we would eliminate one of these issues, and that is that there would not be a second attached accessory structure, but potentially we still have a setback issue.
And the square footage was the issue, too.
So the square footage, because the secondary structure would be larger than the primary?
Both, the gazebo and the secondary building would add up, the square footage would be added up together, and would be too much.
It would be more than half as, it would be, no, I would, would it be bigger than the primary structure?
It's already more than 1,000 square feet.
Right.
And most of this property, I would assume, has been grandfathered in a long time ago to whatever is existing there.
That's what we assume, yes, yeah.
It's been there a long time.
Right, and that second building also is into that setback already, so at some point that was approved, or the codes have changed over the years.
Um, yes.
Yeah, both, right?
So one of the things we struggle with is variances, because it's very hard to prove a hardship.
Sure.
You guys have any comments, other comments, or questions?
Question I have.
Alyssa, can you shut your mic off? Thank you.
And I apologize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but prior to lea, you said you leased this.
Yes, correct, yep.
Prior to leasing, did you check any of our codes and ordinances to see what you could do?
Yep, I've been in communication with both of them long before I signed the lease.
You did?
Yep.
So you signed the lease knowing there were these limitations?
Not entirely. Originally, when we talked, it sounded like this gazebo pergola would be no problem, and then when my contractor came down to the city office and was chatting with Paul, that's when we started to discover some of these things actually. I'm not sure if they realized how big, you know, 20 feet by 30 feet, but once we started actually working with you guys and going through the codes is when we discovered that.
And Tim mentioned our litmus test that we have to do for variances, and Tim or staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but from my knowledge, it's all based on the features of the lot that may not permit something that maybe somebody across the street can do if they have a similar-sized lot. I don't see the hardship here is where I'm struggling with, because there's nothing with the lot that prevents anything, it's the setbacks.
To say it the same exact thing a different way, when we think of a hardship for a variance, we think of the topography of the lot. Is it this way, is it this, you know?
In shape.
Not the use of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Just the shape and the size and the, of the lot, is what we look at to determine if there's a, to determine if there's a hardship, not the use, so.
I guess if you could clarify, I'm not sure how to interject to that, because the hardship would be that we're not able to operate how we would need to operate, would be the use and not the land then, right?
Yeah, right.
Got it.
And the way we think of a hardship is the land.
Sure.
So that's why, what Chuck said, we're not seeing a hardship.
So what would I need to do instead then?
Have you gotten the sheet that describes what a hardship is?
Not with me, but Paul has sent it to me and.
So you've read it?
Yep, can't be monetary, can't be, there's three checklists.
Yep.
Is there any reason why you can't, why it has to be a structure instead of a tarp or a tent or something over it?
So that is a plan B, is we can also build a thing out of pallets that will look very similar with the tarp over it, and since that is considered modular or temporary, that would be okay. We've talked about having a tent out there, we've talked about doing similar things that I just discussed, so that's kind of the, also frustrating in this hardship, is that we can do the exact same thing, it's going to look very similar, but since it's considered modular or temporary, that's okay, but once we put the posts in the cement in the ground, then it becomes permanent.
That is true.
Right. So.
But if you had something that would just be up in October and you could take down the rest of the year?
Yep, that is something we can do. I mean, I'm not sure, we would have to discuss the actual, you know, as long as we're in that 25-foot setback, we probably wouldn't tear the whole thing down, we would just tear it down to the setback then and keep the rest of it up, which is only five feet. So we'd probably only tear down five feet of it and keep the rest up.
They would have to keep something modular out of the setback as well?
I know, it's a goofy one, you guys. Thanks for bearing with me.
It's not, it's over here.
Right, and I appreciate you.
It's a gray area without having the ordinance in front of me and deep diving into it. The zoning ordinance generally applies to permanent physical structures. It doesn't necessarily address temporary structures, where it does address temporary things are temporary signs, or, but an actual temporary structure itself, it doesn't seem to be addressed, so conceptually, yes, it could be.
The other thing to issue is by doing, or to mention is with having the gazebo that we want to build, we'll also be able to keep up with 40 pounds of snow, is one of the requirements for a structure, where if we do the gazebo, or do the pallets, or a tent, there's no way that that's going to support 40 pounds, so it's also the safety of the customers going through there. Building the actual structure we want to build is going to be safer for the structure and for the people in it.
I was just going to say quick that the key thing in this, and it's been referred to a little bit, for me anyway, is this item 9C in our variance, and it's, I think what you were referring to earlier, and it says, "An unnecessary hardship refers solely to the particular physical condition of the property, not any personal or self-inflicted hardship to its owner, financial or otherwise. The hardship must be substantial enough compelling force, not merely for reasons of convenience or profit, and must render the ability to use the land unfeasible without the variance." And that's, I don't have any reason to not, like the enterprise you're trying to put up, I think it'll probably be fun for kids and all that.
Right.
But the other thing that we think about a lot when we talk about these is, if we were to grant this, would we be opening up other properties in Brandon to be able to expand on our zoning ordinances by approving it? So that's our other consideration often, because we sort of establish, well, we literally establish a precedence when we approve a variance, so that's where it's difficult for me.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Would anybody like to enter or make a motion?
We did, too.
Oh, hold on, yeah, come on, you guys want to talk? Come on up. Sorry.
Well, they haven't been sitting here this long for nothing.
I thought you were here for the septic tank discussion.
No.
No?
We live in a different area.
Okay.
We live next door to that house, the 317 Kirkwood, been there 40 years.
Stephen Lind Doppenberg.
And we've heard about the haunted house, but it's been recent that we found out that the actual entertainment was going to be in that shed next to us. You know, the whole thing has been concerning anyway, but now we got something that's potentially, sounds like a noisy thing, especially you've got people congregating outside in that little gazebo or whatever you want. They're going to be pretty giddy before they get in there, I think, and we got a bedroom right there on that side of the house, and our family room in the lower level, so it's, I mean.
It's hard to tell, I think, by that picture, how close we are. We've got like a small fence that goes part of the way down there, but this building would be right there, people outside, we would hear everything. We were thinking that maybe the haunted house would be in that big building at the front, not this, you know, other metal building that's right next to our property. In fact, there's nothing there between that and our backyard, so we didn't realize that that's where it was going to be. And if you put in that building there, or the gazebo, or anything, it's just going to be nothing but noise in our yard. And who says kids aren't, you know, people aren't going to run into our yard? We've already had that from people working over there, little kids running in our backyard, which isn't a big deal, but, you know, this isn't just going to be in October. You know, according to the article we read in the newspaper, it's going to start in September, go through October, go into a week in November, possibly things at Christmas, halftime to Halloween, so I guess this would be, you know, an issue at our house, because there's nothing between us and this property, and I know that this property's been there for years, but there's never been any type of retail like this, or any type of business like this. It's always just been, you know, Alyssa, it's always just been, you know, people kind of working in the buildings, not, you know, nothing going on, there's never been anything like this, yeah.
And relatively quiet businesses there.
Yeah, and I know that, I guess one of my questions is that, I know that he's leasing the property, and I thought that if you went for a variance, that the property owner had to request the variance. That's what it says, what I understand.
Three questions.
And people I've had look at it understand, the property owner, landowner, has to request the variance, not the people leasing the property.
Well, the owner has to sign the application.
I didn't see that.
Also, that street is slated for getting tore up during the very near future, sidewalks and stuff, wouldn't the sidewalks be running right next to that gazebo?
And maybe this is a signature of the owner, we wouldn't know, because you can't read it.
We can certainly ask the applicant.
Yeah, he's aware of it, I don't know, I don't think that that's.
He didn't sign this?
No, that would be my signature.
Yeah, so Gary Fish, the owner of the property, happens to be owner, Parkview Properties LLC of Sioux Falls, owned by Gary Fish, he owns this property, so this application was not even done the right way. And on top of that, they probably maybe have building permits, but there are no building permits posted, and there's been construction work going on there since they started.
Also, there's a, I kind of wonder if there's any issue with this type of business, where you're funneling people through it, you know, lots of public, is there fire martial issues that need to be addressed here? You know, fire suppression things and?
In the building, I mean, we don't know what's in the buildings. There certainly wouldn't be in the metal building. There wouldn't be any kind of sprinkler system or nothing in there.
Yes, sir.
So the background on the use is, this was, we did get, I have gone back and forth in emails with John Freyworth?
He's right across the street from us.
Yep, so he has emailed me back and forth, and I talked to him about the variances that were being sought. His concern, this is the email I mentioned at the start, so I have been, and his comments were much, quite similar to yours. When we were approached originally, I, we looked at the uses, the zoning, as you talked about with the last group, the zoning ordinance is constantly something that we are revising, and we can't possibly anticipate everything that comes before, that's why there's the ability to amend it. This use broadly falls under the category of commercial recreation facility, I think we talked about that as well, because it is a very encompassing definition, and while your argument would be that that definition should be narrowed, it was broad and it fell under that, and that was a permitted use, so whether that's a perfect fit or not is something we maybe look at moving forward, but that's the way it is now, that's broadly what it fits under.
And what we're really considering here is the variance development structure.
And we do understand that.
Yep.
However, you know, when he talks about, when you were asking him about parking and everything, so on our street, there is zero parking on Kirkwood. I mean, between, we have all our stuff in our garage, in our driveway, but the majority of the people, there's no parking ever. In fact, we had family last weekend, and it's like, okay, where are they going to park? Between the, everybody, there's people in our street that have a lot of vehicles, and then you have the apartments, so that's all taken up. So there, you know, there is no parking on our street.
That's an interesting picture, I don't know where it's, when it was taken, but usually that whole street there is lined with cars.
Cars, yeah.
Yep, well, no, we can't control off-street parking.
I, well, I understand that, but you brought to him, where is everybody going to park? And that's always been our question, where are people going to park?
Well, so he meets the parking requirements for the building that he has.
Parking on the street?
No.
What?
The required parking spaces for those type of facilities are based on square footage.
There's like three parking, three parking spots in the front, which aren't going to be used though for.
So we require parking spaces based on square footage.
I get that.
Yeah.
And whether that's the right calculation, you could argue it's not.
Yeah, obviously, it's not. If you're going to run a business, three parking spots in the front is not going to cut it, you know that.
He did make accommodations for running his business with the across-the-street businesses.
So when you send us a letter about a variance, then why are you sending it to us? What can be, what can be our objection?
To deny the variance.
Because what, so what do we have to do with that then? If you don't want to hear any of our objections?
No, the objection is to the variance, the variance is whether or not he can build a structure. The variance isn't whether or not he can run a business there.
Well, I understand that.
Yes.
Okay, so the variance, and I guess I'm not understanding what that has to do with us then, because you're, I guess I'm not getting it.
You can, you can be against him building a structure.
Okay, that we are.
Okay.
Because of the noise and everything else that it's going to create.
Okay.
And the fact that, obviously, this application was not made correctly.
Okay.
And there again, I ask, is there a building permit?
Well, yeah, right, if there's not a building permit.
Because?
At this point, the applicant has not come to me to say that they are doing X, Y, and Z, they will require one, if they're doing some refinishing, or new flooring, or new painting, whatever, there's some things, but if there are some things that need to be done, and we find out about it, we'll write the owner a letter and say, you must come get a building permit. Part of that process is going back to your saying, fire sprinklers, site parking, we go through the whole gamut of bringing that facility up to speed for that particular use into 2021 IBC code, so.
Yeah, and I'm not even talking about the sprinklers, we're just more concerned about, you know, how safe that is, but there's definitely construction been going on over there for a long time.
Well, we'll address that tomorrow.
Does a basic remodel require?
It depends on what they're doing.
I mean, if we put, we put a little deck on the front of our house, we had to have a building permit.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so.
So decks are different.
Pardon me?
Decks are different.
Well, I know I get that.
A remodel in commercial, potentially, would need one. If they're putting non-lebrant walls, it would not necessarily, but we look at egress doors and exiting and the whole thing, so that's part of the city of Brandon where we adopted the code, so.
And I know you guys can't know everything, we've been through this not that long ago, but it's just a little disconcerting that somebody come in and do a business like this, the application's not done, no building permit, it's like if you've been working with the city for this long, with this business, how can none of that happen? So, anyway, we're against it for the big issue of the noise and all that, and like Steve started to say, they're going to be redoing our street. And like Steve started to say, they're gonna be redoing our street like next year, something like that. They're gonna be putting in sidewalks, so how is that gonna work if you give them a variance and they build towards the street farther?
Okay.
So, when, when they redo streets, that does not change the property line whatsoever. The street has, has the same right of way.
Right.
Same boulevard area, the sidewalk's gonna go in this, in the city area and then the prop, but the prop line doesn't change. So visually, it may look dramatically different when people say, I thought, I, I owned to the curb and gutter, they don't. You own several feet away from the curb and gutter.
Oh, I understand. It's, it's ten feet in, but you're also gonna put sidewalks there.
Or in, in the city area.
In our street, there will be sidewalks.
Right.
We've been given notice, so that's gonna put it even closer to what he wants to.
Well, no, that the setbacks have nothing to do with, with that project, one. Two, the setbacks are starting at the prop line, which again, does not change with this course of work, this can be done by public works. The setback would be from the property line going west, and that same setback would, would apply regardless of that project you're talking about. It would not be affected. Yeah, so.
So anyway, anything else?
So, yeah.
Well, go.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is now, if, uh, if the property owner did not sign the request, is it a legitimate request or do you need to redo the property work before we can consider it?
It is my understanding that based on both the text of the ordinance and the nature of this form, that requires the signature of the present owner of record being the property owner, that the property owner would have to consent on the form. Because ultimately, it is the property that the person owns that is getting the variance, not the use is not getting the variance, it's the property.
So that would mean we can't, we can't vote on this tonight?
You, you could defer if you wanted to until that is obtained. You could deny based on it not being that. You have, you have options.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny the request. If you need reasons, it'd be because the owner of record didn't sign it and also it just doesn't meet our definition of hardship.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the variance application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, good luck on your haunted house.
Much, and if I could say, for the love of my heart, to hear those things, I wish you would come to me in person. The girl that ran over the one day with my daughter.
You've never, we're not against business. You've never come to us either.
Yep, I, I.
And we moved along, we've done all this stuff.
Okay.
For five people, eight persons.
Okay, okay.
We just didn't know it was gonna be in that building.
Yeah.
Okay.
We thought it was gonna be the other buildings, now how much more should be in that building? Right next door.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Zach?
Yes.
Can you hang out? Can I talk to you after the meeting a little bit?
Sure, what time is that?
Well, whatever, yeah. Or sometime when you're around.
Sure, do you have a car?
Oh, for the love. I would interdate, I would like to have a motion to adjourn the board of adjustments. Motion and a second to adjourn the board of adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just, just say aye, Alyssa.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, but there's spooky stuff that goes on in there, and I don't believe in any of that, but my crew does and they have all sorts of ghost stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Item number thirteen, discussion on allowing septic tanks in R1 low-density residential districts. I see nobody has stuck around for this. Oh, you too, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, is anybody? Has anybody read this? Have any thoughts on it?
Based on the comments I received at the last meeting, I tried to streamline it to address which size lot requires what, and that was based on the state standard of the twenty thousand-ish, right around there, sque, square feet, half a acre-ish. And then we, there's, the state administrative rules covers certain requirements for septic tanks, holding tanks, there's setback requirements in there. So there's a section in there, would, if you would like to go above and beyond that, and I tried to reference in there what those sections are. So if, you can, you can certainly do more, you just can't do less. Um, if you wanted to go above, and this requires they, all the systems be engineered and they has to be installed by a person licensed or certified to do so if that's required. I don't know if a holding tank requires that, but I certainly know a septic tank does, so if the state does require certification for a holding tank, it would cover that as well. So that's kinda, we tried to streamline it a little bit, remove some language, so that's the adjustments based on what I gathered, based on discussions.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'm good with all the changes here, Patrick. Um, when I read it, I didn't see or I missed it. Does it, um, address that they, uh, when they build the home, that they have to put it in the system right away? We talked about that too.
That, yes, that would be the section H on page thirty-two. This is the attempt at that. It, it's probably could use some refining, but basically, no certificate of occupancy will be issued for any of the homes unless th, they have infrastructure meeting. The current city standards, obviously we can build up to some future standard, we have no idea what is. For the public water system has been constructed and is available to the lot. That will allow it to be constru, connected to the public sewer system once it becomes available. And in the next section, when it becomes available, it would be determined by the city engineer, whether Tammy or her predecessors down the road. Should there be them?
I'm good with this.
Okay. I mean, the state has done a lot of work, so we might as well let them.
Yep.
But for local rules, we did things like, the infrastructure, we did things like, um, what else is in here?
I think for now, we beat this horse.
Okay, I like it. Anybody else have anything else on this? Otherwise, we're up for a first reading, is that right, or?
Um, I'm mostly, and I, I imagine Brian would have some thoughts if he were here on whether we should go above and beyond.
No, he has to be here.
Ta-da.
So if Brian is going back and listening to the tape or watching the YouTube.
We'll make sure he hears that.
I am open to your thoughts by email or a phone call, whether those administrative rules work or if you would like to see additional setbacks for, there are state setbacks for wells and waterways and structures, but if you would like to see increased numbers or they're good where they are, I am open to your thoughts.
That's a message to Brian, not us.
Eh, uh, everyone, everyone on P and Z or if anyone in the city council has comments, cuz it'll ultimately come to you, or people in the public generally.
Well, I would say you let them review it and then we would be ready for a public hearing. Would that be the next step?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Assuming there aren't any comment.
Okay, so item number fourteen, discussion on individually plotted lots surrounded by commonly-owned space. This has to do with parking and signs, um, on commercial, heavy industrial, suite-type settings.
Correct, and potentially this, there is this arrangement allowed for, there is a townhouse arrangement with a commonly-owned space surrounding, so that is something to consider as well when we go through these, if we wanna carve that out specifically. The big changes were, at the last meeting, they were presented, one ordinance applied to the business and one applied to industrial. We chopped out the difference and just put it all under one broad heading. There was the difference with the, the signs for, what it originally did was you had your, your, it's, the signage is based on frontage and that presents a problem when the commonly-owned space is on the frontage but not the platted lots. So the original proposal was you took your share of what your frontage would be and that was your signage allotment, but then it was brought up that maybe the structures being as a whole would want a overarching sign for them in addition to your own allotment. So there is a blank in there, whatever you think that number should be. And then freestanding sign, whatever is not used of the own allotments on the lots would be allowed to be used by the collective of the structures in the commonly-owned space as a freestanding sign. And I imagine in most cases, most businesses would probably want most of their signage dedicated to the freestanding sign. Because that's the most visible, but that's not necessarily probably true in all situations, so that's why that's there, so. I, since this would potentially apply to those townhouses as well, would you want, they would have their allotment based on what those rules are, but would you want the overarching sign on those? Would you want that number to be the same as you would in industrial structure? It's where we want that line to be, and maybe that's just something that takes a little bit of, of thought, we come back to, given that it is.
I like this for the industrial and commercial. I don't know about the townhouse thing.
Yeah, I don't know about the townhouse thing, that that needs to be in that, but your section nine in here that you're wondering about the additional square foot of wall roof projecting signs, do you have any guidance or what other communities have done, so we aren't just pulling the numbers out of the air?
I, I have not looked specifically at that.
I'd like to hear some other examples rather than just plugging stuff out of the air.
I like three hundred.
Based on my, my past role with traveling around all sorts of communities and writing these, most communities do not have that setup built into their zoning ordinance. Their zoning ordinances are very basic, that you have a lot and you have this, there's not necessarily the commonly-owned space aspect built in. Some function that way, whether that complies with the zoning ordinance or not is questionable. But Sioux Falls probably has something, probably larger cities as well, but most of the small towns would not.
Okay, give us maybe a look larger cities.
I, I will look into it.
So this would apply le, to some of your buildings?
I'm sorry?
This would apply to some stuff that you're doing.
Yes, so, uh.
Cuz currently, if they were on frontage, none of the lots would have signage as they currently exist, and that's obviously a problem.
Yeah.
So that's what we're trying to.
So this would be like an industrial suite. Each suite would be able to have their own sign plus the signage that would be common space, if you will.
Right. But I think you're referring to a rental project, kind of thing where it's subdivided.
Sure.
Signage offices are important.
Yeah.
Yep. And right now, each lot signage is based on street frontage. The problem is if you have the commonly-owned space, your individually-platted lots where the buildings are would not have frontage. So they, by default, under the zoning arts, they wouldn't have signage, so that's what we're trying to fix.
But you're saying you have a module of signage plus individual, correct? That's what you're.
Your signage, the way it's currently worded, is you would have signage, you would have for your individually-platted lots based on what their portion of the commonly-owned space would be. And then the commonly-owned space would have its own number if they wanted to, like, this is Lee Building Number One, and you would have a Lee Building Number One and each individual would have its pet store or whatever.
Right.
And then whatever is not used by the individual building would go into the freestanding for the commonly-owned space.
Yes. So basically.
You understand it, the way mine's designed, each one you have a frontage, it's divided into six lots. But at Oney's out there as an example, where there's a common area, the park you drive on is a common.
Yep.
That would be where it's more importantly, see what I'm saying? The, the common guy that has a common area, there's been some discussion about that at the I-90 Plaza as well, kind of thing. In regards to, I'm driving on your lot and you're driving on mine. Does that make sense? There's, it's a common, all, all, eight of us own this lot.
Yes.
Uh, but I was the first tenant and I got the majority of the sign, the guy that's eighth tenant, could probably, you know what I mean, they've had to allocate it some back. I don't know. I would probably think of something like a storefront, you know what I mean, in that case, instead of, as I look at Patrick's desk, they're all divided into twelve little stalls, um, you know what I mean, in that, he's got fifty feet of, his storefront is fifty foot wide, doesn't make no difference how big the parking lot is and where this lot is. That'd be just my quick plot, I guess. The storefront, each.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. That's what we're saying, yes. That's it. Okay, so you'll find out what Sioux Falls does for that.
I will see if I can come up with a number that would work for the joint.
Okay. All right, item number fifteen, a parking pad definition.
The only comment that I recall from going back to the tape and memory was, we wa, Mr. Hybrink wanted to add.
Trailers.
Trailer, just as, a trailer to that.
Okay.
That inserts trailer into that.
I'm good with that.
Everybody good with that? All right, look at us go. Item sixteen, fence definition.
Currently, there is no fence standards for NRC lots. So this attempts to treat more residentially-used NRC lots as residential properties and other as other, being business or industri, so it kinda keeps those standards that way. Then it also deals with the, the sport recreation areas and that adds that as well.
So we address the solidness, opaqueness, whatever you wanna call it.
And it put it at ten percent and it allows wind screens and mesh fabric, whatever, on there as well, so that doesn't take away from the ten percent.
Okay, is everybody good with this language?
Yep.
You good with it?
Do you do mesh?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what mine.
Yep. Okay. Moving on to item number seventeen, cooperative parking and shared parking. Okay?
So nothing has changed here, it's just back for discussion.
Okay.
Or if we're short on time, limited.
Did you have any questions of this commission, of things that you wanted to point out?
Um.
Does anybody here have anything they would like to?
So the shared parking one is, I think I have this right, this, this, so, I'm trying to remember right, but I think the shared parking one is for those properties where there are multiple businesses on it and they utilize the same lot, so say, one example would be, the church up there is both used as a church and the farmer's market is there. Both uses would not have to have its own separate independent parking, minimal parking requirements. They could pool those together based on they are used at different times, so they, the uses don't interlap. There's no point of adding the parking spaces together where they wouldn't overlap. Uh, cooperative parking is similar to something like I-90 Plaza where rather than, this is kinda what we talked about with Dolly Farms, how you have, Target has quite a, quite a few people there, but everything else there kinda seems like a lot of parking lot that's not being used. Would we rather use that space if you have multiple uses utilizing the same parking lot, would we rather have you couple more buildings rather than just an open parking lot, so?
Would this require that we change the parking standards based on square footage like we currently do?
Potentially, I'd have to look more into the interplay with that. This is just kinda throwing out the idea.
I don't like the idea.
Yeah, are we all in favor of trying to, cuz I see this as being, one, we can share parking, two, we can probably limit some access points onto the street. Um, be a lot easier for people to travel from point A to point B within a development. So, yes.
Does, in a typical strip mall, do you have how every, how, eh, eh, do you have certain number of parking places for each tenant in a strip mall already, or do you just have?
You base it on.
Each use would have. Each use would have, it's minimum parking.
Yeah.
So would, if we change this or anything we're talking about, would that change parking in a, in a typical strip mall?
Potentially.
Maybe, yes.
So it...
Or when that, the church that is in this Fastenal building wanted to, I can't remember what they wanted to do, but they couldn't because of parking regulations, but...
They didn't have enough, yes.
Yeah, they didn't have enough, but maybe under this, they might?
Could, well, it, it would look at the, so it would look at the whole property and, and recognize that maybe half the building uses the parking at one time of day, and the other half of the building uses it the other time of day, so why require that much parking for...
The cooperative one is based on it being the, you, you, you're abutting it, whether it's the parking lot's really long and you're just abutting it at one point, or if you are in a certain proximity to it. For example, the, the plan we were presented earlier, my guess is, the building on lot two would be in close enough proximity to the parking lot on lot three, that there would be some opportunity for
Shared parking.
shared cooperative parking spaces. So it could potentially...
Maybe even eliminate driveway.
Alleviate some of the concerns that people had on parking.
Yes.
It's not a finalized language, so I'm certainly open to suggestions on how we can have more utilized space and less open parking space. A lot of it isn't my own kinda generated idea, just sitting there typing away.
We're letting Patrick be creative, Chuck, don't stifle him.
Trying to help him.
Stifling him. I think, I think it seems as though we're in favor
We are.
of, of doing something that would move this direction.
So, it, it could potentially apply to the project that was presented earlier, so I'm certainly open to your thoughts on that as well.
Okay. I will move on to 18 then. R2 amendments for Villa Homes. Mostly what we're looking at is a setback, side yard setback.
From seven to five.
From seven to five.
And you have received a letter, an email that was sent to me by the, the fire chief, so...
Yep. Now, I did ask Paul earlier if there was any national fire codes that would prohibit this. He says if you have five and five, that's 10 feet in between structures. He's not 100% sure when some regulations start to kick in, but 10 feet still meets.
Right, right, yeah, the city of Sioux Falls has the same regulations, they're, they're agreeing to 10 feet, so it, it would meet the residential. As I was mentioning to him offline, if you had a high-hazard explosive building factory, then you, you couldn't do this. But you're talking about two residential environments are a risk, and, and 10 feet is, is acceptable, to not have a firewall between them, or on, on that side, so. I, I certainly respect the fire chief and his concerns, and you'll have to play those out at, at the board level, so.
So does anybody else have any thoughts on this, as far as the side yard regulations?
I'd be ready to move forward.
The chief did include his cell phone number, if you wanted to give him a call to discuss more in depth, if you have any particular questions.
Okay. And I see this still maintains the, the, the front yard setback and the rear yard setback, the building height, all of that still applies, so, okay.
Yep, as far as I know, R2 allowed the lot width they wanted, it was just a setback. So, there was some discussion, they kinda wanted to keep it as R1, but you all seemed resistant to that, just because that would be quite the drastic change all over town. But R2 would be accommodating to that, at least on the width front already, with a slight change to the side yard setback.
Does anybody have any problems with that? No? Okay. And then last but not least, item number 19 is the building permits. Has Paul been busy? Not busy enough, Paul.
He was in 59 last year, at this time, or also at the...
How's this time?
It, it is, yeah, to date, to date, yes, sir. We take them as they come. Spurts.
Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, it is 8:24, and we are adjourned.